All right, here we go. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Thank you for being here this evening. This is a special city council meeting Wednesday, August twenty eighth, and it's five thirty P M. And as a reminder, if you would like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the city clerk prior to the item. Mister Donahue, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Here.
Councilmember Tassari?
Here. He's here.
Here.
Here. Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Here.
Mayor Rigby?
Here.
Uh, moving on to item number three, closed session, public comments. Mister Donahue, do we have any requests to speak for the closed session portion of the agenda?
No, mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item four, which is a closed session. At this time, the, at this time, the council will be recessing to closed session. Ms Vega, will you please introduce the item?
Yes, uh, the council will be meeting in closed session to confer with its labor negotiator, the city manager, with respect to all unrepresented, uh, city employees.
Perfect. You've reached the seventh floor. You may exit the elevator now. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get our, uh, our special, continue our special meeting. Um, we are coming back from a closed session. Ms Vega, will you please report the action taken during closed session?
Uh, there was no reportable action.
Great, thank you. We are now, uh, we'll now call this meeting to order of the special meeting of August twenty eighth, sixth, uh, we're after six thirty, about six forty-five. And we will start with a pledge of allegiance by councilmember Tassari.
Please rise, place your hand.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item number six, public comments. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered, and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole, and do not engage in dialogue with individual members, city staff, or members of the audience. Mister Donahue, do we have public comments this evening?
Yes, mayor, we have one comment card from Michael O'Connor.
Mister O'Connor?
Yes, hello. Um, my name is Michael O'Connor. I live on Rowan Court. Last week, I sent a pretty heated email to all of you at the front about a property next to mine. That has been a code problem for quite some time. The reason I sent it to you is that I had been told by a neighbor that, um, prior photos of rodents at the property didn't prove that there was a rodent problem. So I, I sent that. I didn't hear that firsthand, so I don't know if that's true, but I wanted it brought up here. I've been reassured since then by city officials that things will happen pretty quickly at the property. But what I wanted to bring up are two things. First, when I first reported this problem almost a year ago, after the first ascent and winds last fall, I wasn't really met with a lot of seriousness from the front desk. Um, my complaint had to do with the fact trash had been piled up all on top of the, the bins in front of this house, and the winds had blown garbage, including like chicken bones onto my yard. Here we are a year later. There are rats. I've seen a rat on my property. I really don't want to live that way. I don't think anybody in Eastville wants to live that way. However, I want to let this council know, you've got options in front of you soon to help prevent this problem from happening. Our current waste management contract allows for individuals to just not pay for trash, not have trash picked up, and it gets cut off. I saw that happen several times at the house next to me till they finally quit. Other cities actually mandate trash, and that it has to be paid and service provided. And if it's not paid for, it will go on property tax bill with actions from the city council. That's one other way cities do it, and I know this for a fact, because I have, uh, very direct knowledge of City of Highland and San Bernardino County about how they handle it. A year ago, San Bernardino County High, City of Highland actually went a step further. They renegotiated their contract, and they mandated placement of waste management, uh, billing onto the property tax bill, thereby eliminating all of this billing, non-payment, and so on. And in return, the City of Highland actually got funding for a half person on their code enforcement program. The city I know is always talking about trying to figure out how to get more revenues in. We also talk about it being a community and pride and prosperity community, but having trash everywhere just isn't, isn't any good. So I'm gonna leave it right now as far as what's happening next to my property. I'm gonna rely on the statements from the city officials that this is getting sorted out. But I want you guys to really think about when those trash contracts come up for renewal, whether there's a better way of doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister O'Connor. Do we have any other public comments?
No, mayor.
So I, I just wanted to share, um, last year, June of twenty eighteen, the city council put both of our franchise waste haulers, Burt Tech and Waste Management, on a wind down notice, a- and, and so over the next four years, we have the opportunity to renegotiate our contracts, uh, because the wind, the, the evergreen clause is a four-year contract. Um, and so we are gonna, uh, we have created an ad hoc committee, uh, for the solid waste hauler franchise agreement, which I believe, uh, consists of Mayor Rigby and Mayor Pro Tem Plot, or?
It's myself and councilmember Yao.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
It, it's councilmember Yao and, and Mayor Pro Tem Plot. And, um, what we will be doing is, is re- uh, renegotiating our franchise agreements so that we can put something in place. Um, and there, the, our original franchise agreements were created in the county before we were a city. That's why we have two haulers, the line, because the, the line was split up when this was the Mariloma area, uh, for, for many people. Um, and, um, so we are working towards that. Um, in the past, we used to have solid waste on the property tax, and I think it was like three, or four, or three or five years ago, we decided to put it o- on the new billing cycle, uh, um, and, uh, we are reevaluating whether that was the right move or not, and, and we can change that, uh, and, and go back if, if, if necessary with the franchise agreement. So there are actions being put in place. They just take some time to do.
Thank you. No other public comments? Then we'll move on to our consent calendar. Item number seven. All matters that consent calendar are considered routine, and it should be approved with one motion unless a councilmember, staff member, or member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Mister Donahue, have any staff member or any members of the tu- public requested to pull any item?
Yes, mayor, we have two comment cards for item seven point one.
All right, since that's the only item on our consent calendar, there's no need to ask if the council would like to pull anything. We will, uh, can we proceed with a brief presentation on item seven point one, Mister Jones?
Yes, this isn't a requirement, uh, for the city manager to ask, uh, or, or share with you about a request for, uh, to go out for a request for qualifications, but it was more that this is a very important project for the community and for the council, and so we wanted to highlight that we're gonna be going out for an, uh, R F Q to select the most qualified, um, uh, consultant team to help us, uh, uh, design a civic center, uh, which could include, uh, the ci- a city hall and a public library. Um, and we have a council ad hoc committee, which is made up of councilmember Yao and councilmember Tassari, uh, that is the civic, yeah, the civic center ad hoc committee, and we've been touring and visiting other city halls to get ideas for, and asking them uh, what they like about their city hall, what they don't like about their city hall, what they would have done differently if they could have, uh, learned from their mistakes or opportunities. Uh, um, and so you might have seen a video here recently, um, where, uh, councilmember Yao and councilmember Tassari highlighted, uh, their tour of Diamond Bar, um, a city council and, or city hall and the library. And so we are just going out for R F Q, uh, and then we would go, we would negotiate, uh, for, um, a contract, uh, and bring that back for council approval under new business, um, so.
Thank you. Can we please have the public comments on this item?
First, uh, first commenter is Keith White.
Mister White?
Hello, um, will you guys get ready, look for the Sultan? Can you also make sure this consulting form, um, basically, so we can make sure we guys both city hall and the eastville library, that we actually have a public bus go by there when we have this, um, and we guys look for the plan or the lots? So, just so with the timeframe, just in case students might want to hop on the bus, get to the library and stuff, we need to make sure we have public transportation for kids that can get to the libraries, in case they need to do their homework, they don't computer, whatever, at their house. So that's my concern for the public, this consulting form. Please make sure we add Riverside Transit Agency into this consulting process, so we make sure we have buses there. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next public comment?
Next comment card is from Felicia Chen.
Miss Chen, please.
Good evening, your mayor and city council members. I would first, um, like to address that i- if and when this, um, consulting team is being considered, I would like to be considered to be added onto that team to be, um, for the public library portion of that, um, just so you have, uh, uh, somebody that's on the member that actually has been through multiple libraries and knows what it's like to be at a library and what should be added in. Um, and I did also want to mention if and when there is a continued partnership with the Riverside County Library. We are also, um, ha- we also do have a third party, um, which is, um, called E D A, which is Economic Development Agency. They are also in charge of Riverside County's library's aesthetics looks as well as the equipment. So, um, I would like them to be considered to be added in as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any further public comments on this item?
No, mayor.
No, then I would like to turn to council for council discussion. Councilmember Yao?
So in re- in response to the first comment that was actually brought up, um, between the city manager and the committee, we, we definitely, we, we're well aware that we need to make sure that it's, it's accessible and that we have public transit going through that place. Either choose, either first by choosing a place that already is within the existing route, or second to work with R D A to make sure that the route goes through the civic center.
Councilmember Tassari? Councilmember Lorimer? Councilmember Plot? All right, then if there's no further discussion on this item, I am looking for a motion.
So I move.
Second.
Mister Donahue?
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number eight, public hearings. We have one public hearing item tonight. And as a reminder, if you would like to speak on this item, please complete a blue speaker form, and the clerk will call you up when the public comment portion has been opened. Ms Gibson Williams, will you please proceed with item eight point one?
Yes, mayor, good evening. Tonight for your consideration is an appeal of the seven eleven convenience store and gas station. It's out, located at the campus. And so I'll walk you through some of, uh, the components for the project. So rather than, um, do this with words, we like graphics, so we put it on one quick graphic to understand, to get a quick overview of what's happening at the site. So there are four entitlement applications and one for each of the different components. So it covers, uh, the C store itself, the gas station, and the car wash. And then for the, those that are detail oriented, on the right-hand side, we have what the actual square footages are for each of the, each of the components. Uh, but basically, uh, just thirty-five hundred or so square foot convenience store. There's a gas canopy. There's also a car wash that is attached to the convenience store. It's an automatic, uh, drive-through car wash with three vacuum installs. There's sixteen fueling pumps. And then there, lastly, there's the type of alcohol beverage sales that they're being requested. It's for beer and wine, which is type twenty, off-site sales. So a little bit of geography, uh, the area in red indicates where the seven eleven is. Uh, the vacant parcel, just to the west of that, there was a mini storage that was approved there, uh, by the planning commission. To the north of the development is the homestead, uh, on the east side is Walmart, and then Latrells is the residential community just to the south. So just to orient you a little bit on the site plan, um, you see that Providence Way is the main entry from Archibald. That's up at the very top. Then there's Archibald Avenue that runs the length of the site. Um, and then you see that what you will see from Archibald is actually the seven eleven gas station as opposed to the canopies themselves and the, uh, fueling stations. So that gives it a, a good perspective from Archibald. And then next we'll talk about how you get into and out of the site. So there's two points of access and circulation, one from Providence and one from Archibald, uh. And those are indicated by the red arrows, and then the blue arrows indicate, uh, pedestrian pathways connectivity. So what we've done is cut out a part of that site plan, superimposed it on the aerial, just to give an, an idea of the length. It's about five hundred and fifty-one feet from that car wash component, um, to the residential neighborhoods. If there's any, you know, questions or comments about the distance, uh, it, you know, for noise purposes, it's, uh, a fairly good amount of linear footage away, um, and also adjacent to Providence and Archibald Avenue, um, no noise coming from the car wash. The vacuums are even further away, uh, closest to Providence Avenue. There's three of them. So, um, the noise, it has been studied in our environmental study and, and not going to be impacting those residences. Also, uh, wanted to just show that we've taken some pictures just the other day, actually, out at the site. It's just to show that we do have some separation from the development by the partial block wall. So there's a, there's a wall, uh, that extends, actually, you can see it better in this aerial. It's about six hundred and seventeen feet of block wall, uh, from Archibald, all along those homes to the nearest opening in the wall, um, at the site adjacent from the proposed. So you can see, uh, up in the far right-hand corner where the, where the development is, and then you can see the residential community traverses the wash, or the trail, rather, and with the easement. And then it's six hundred and seventeen feet of block wall that, before the nearest opening, so quite a bit of distance between the seven eleven and the, uh, adjacent residential neighborhood. And, uh, just to also note that the trail in and of itself, uh, maintained by two separate entities, uh, the campus taking care of the aerial in the green, um, about a hundred and twenty-seven feet, and then J C S D taking care of the area to the south indicated in blue, um. And now a little bit for the elevations. Uh, we did work very closely with the applicant in order to get a, uh, seven eleven, which would definitely have a presence from the street. So you can see that this building features, uh, the articulation, both vertical and horizontal, so there's, uh, pop-outs and pop-ups, if you will. And then there's at least three different building materials and a color scheme that's complementary. And now we see here the view from Archibald Avenue of the seven eleven. And then also from Providence Way. And just to outline, uh, the canopy as opposed to the convenience store and the car wash, there is a, uh, elevation of what the, of what the canopy would look like, along with the, um, along with the fueling canopies, uh, and the actual, uh, places to fuel. But I would like to point out that we did, uh, add a condition of approval to continue. You see that stone treatment feature right there, all the way up to the roof, so we did add that as a, um, architectural feature. So the fueling canopy will have a very, a complimentary, uh, look to the actual C store. And then the underground tanks just indicated there in red, um, so you can see where they are in juxtaposition to the rest of the items on the site. As far as the drive-through car wash is concerned, there's indicating the blue arrow where you would be able to enter the site from Archibald Avenue, and then enter into the drive-through car wash, which is indicated there in red. Um, and then there's also a lane that if you wanted to get out of the drive-through lane, you could, and you can go, um, to fuel as well. Now, as far as the floor plan, uh, this would be inside the convenience store, and just wanted to highlight where the beer and wine cells would be located. It is about thirty square feet if you take those two yellow areas. That's where indicated where the alcohol cells would be. And that's less than five percent of the floor area of the entire site, of, of the entire building. So, uh, alcohol, alcoholic beverage control, um, issues on sale and off sale licenses by census tract. So this location is, is in track four oh six point oh nine, and we're focusing today on, um, off sale, because it's, it's not for consumption on site. So there's a total of four that allowed. There's one license that's already in the census tract. That's for the C V S. And this would make the second request. So just to give you, there's many conditions, but just to highlight a few, um, that if there's any change in the type of store at this location, that we require that the C U P come back to the city for review. And then also we have conditions of approval preventing any type of stacking of vehicles so that it wouldn't, uh, back up onto the site or onto the street. Also, um, the parcel itself is actually two, so we've added a part of a condition to actually merge those two parcels together. And that if there's any points of pedestrian connectivity, that they be well eliminated and safe, and also indicated with, um, decorative paving and lighting. There is a minimum size of restriction for beer and wine bottles, and that's characteristic of all the C U Ps that are approved in Eastville. Um, the display storage has to be located at the back of the store. You saw that on the floor plan. There's, uh, conditions for advertisement, and also, um, that there's required state mandated training for the employees. And so there are, um, some options for the city council this evening, given the appeal. The first is to direct staff to prepare a resolution to approve the appeal, uh, of the decision of the planning commission, or you can modify the project as you see fit, and direct staff to prepare a resolution, uh, to approve the appeal of the decision of, by the planning commission. Or we can, you can direct staff to prepare a resolution to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the planning commission, or continue the public hearing. And so that concludes staff's presentation. There is also an agenda report that has, um, information about the project, including, uh, economic development and fiscal impact analysis. So if there's any, uh, questions that the council have, I'd be very happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you for that presentation. Do we have any questions from council for staff? Mister Tassari?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, there's a block wall at the, uh, south end?
No. Uh, you are talking about the south end of the residence?
No.
Or the, the, the project?
South end of the project.
The project, actually, there's one small one at the very, very south end of the project, all the way towards the end, but otherwise it's all open on the project side.
Yeah, just, uh, 'cause they can't tell from the, uh, aerials, but, uh,
Sure.
So the planning commission didn't recommend putting that extra buffer in there?
Let me get back to it real quickly. It's all right at the top. So.
Yeah, that works. So down at the south end, 'cause I'm, I don't, I don't know, i- is there, see where the, uh, the warehouses are? Is there a wall along that, uh, access road?
No.
None?
No. So there's a small between built, what you see, I, I think that's building six. There's a small, uh, wall that's there. You can see just the shadow of it. I don't know if we have a pointer here that will indicate that. But there's nothing bifurcating, uh, between the seven eleven on the, on the project side and the residence, other than the residence itself. Is there?
Got it.
Uh, okay, but it's not showing up on the, okay.
So basically, it's just gonna be consistent with what's already existing?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, are they gonna sell diesel?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd have to, yes.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Yao?
I'm looking at the slide where it states the project conditions. Are those the only conditions, or are there more that?
Uh, no, there, there are more, but I wanted to highlight a few that came up at the planning commission.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I, I, I saw that. It's on the, on the agenda, but, um, do you mind just reiterating it for the public knowledge?
That, uh, going through, you want me to go through all the conditions?
For the, for the alcohol permit specifically.
Oh, okay. So there-
Yeah, that one.
Yes, yes. So, um, there are, uh, these are some that pertain to the, specifically to the beer and wine cell. So there's a minimum size restriction for the beer and wine bottles, uh, that there is a location requirement for the beer and wine and the display and the storage of it in the store. Uh, again, that was about thirty square feet, about five percent of the floor area. Um, and that the advertisement needs to be displayed in the store windows or outside of the store, and that's it. There shouldn't be any advertising going on there. And then all the employees must complete the state's mandated alcohol sales training, as well as the store's internal training.
I, uh, I'm a little bit confused. I threw the hours, the week.
That's, that's what I was looking for. So the hours for this one is six A M. to two A M.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Right after I just drank something. Thank you. So th- thank you for the presentation. Uh, the, the easement that we see in, uh, we had, well, it's in the staff report here, but was shown in the picture, uh, the, from the aerial. How wide is that?
So it was a hundred and twenty-seven feet plus sixty. Let me see if I can get to that. Oh, right, so it's about a hu- about a hundred and ninety, just shy of two hundred feet.
Okay, and are there any plans in the works related to that area? Uh, any future plans, any thoughts as we move forward, or will that remain vacant, empty, aside from the, our transmission lines?
Yeah, the easement part, uh, would remain, well, in a vegetative state, but then the, and the trail is located there now. I don't have, we don't have any plans on file for any storage or anything underneath the easement at this time.
Okay, but, but trail enhancement, are there any discussions about that? I know it had been briefly discussed before i- in the past about working on enhancing that?
Okay.
No?
So I hadn't, I'm not aware of any at the time. I'd have to find that out. I do know, I can, you only see the portion of it, but the trail is, is, is there. There is a curvilinear design, and there's planting on the area of the easement that's adjacent to the residential community.
Okay.
Um, you can see the outline of it in some of the areas, but when you go out there, it's actually in place, the curvilinear sidewalk and the planting.
So the block wall that you had pictured earlier, that was what was associated with the, the track itself as opposed to anything else, right?
Yes, councilman, there's a, it's a hard from the Google Maps to transpose it, but yeah, there's about a six hundred and seventeen linear foot wall, um, from Archibald all the way to the first opening to the community right there on Cadenia, Condensa, Condensa Drive.
Okay, and that's standard, what goes around track homes, uh?
Six foot wall.
Okay, all right.
Yes, councilman.
Includes my questions. Appreciate it.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Do you know I have, uh, one question? How many, how many proposed convenience store gas stations, not proposed, how many approved gas stations, convenience stores are in the Archibald-Lineman intersection already prior to this proposal?
I
Just wanna make sure I have clarification.
Just want to make sure I have clarification on that before making assumptions.
Okay. I would have to defer to somebody that has a little bit more history than me. I think I don't have that because right now, I know the Walmart.
How many already approved convenience store gas stations are there on the intersection of Archibald and Limonite?
To my knowledge, there's one in, which is north of the intersection as part of the merge. But I, I'd have to look back into Walmart and see if Walmart had a gas station. But I don't believe it did.
I think it may.
I think it may.
I want to say it does have a gas station.
Yeah, I'd like to have confirmation on that, just to make sure.
No, 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 that's north of Limonite. Walmart, I think when we approved that, that it did have a gas station also.
Okay. Can we get confirmation on that?
Yes.
That would be helpful information.
That was kind of my, my main question was just on that. If Walmart, I'm almost positive that it has a gas station approved there at that location. Looking at the easement, going back to the easement, as it says, maintain under those two separate areas that J C S D maintains one and then was it the
It's actually
Campus maintains the other portion of it? What does that maintain consist of?
Weed abatement and debris, trash.
All right, that's, I don't have any other questions right now. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing if there's no further questions from council. And we will, Mr. Donahue, can we proceed with our public comments, please? As the public hearing is now open.
So we have nine comment cards. I also note that there's a letter of support for the project that was submitted that has two hundred and twenty signatures on it. The first comment card is Vino.
Hello, Mayor, we are Pro Ten, council members, city manager and all the city staff. As you guys already know, my name is Vino Saghar and I'm a resident of Eastville for the last eighteen years. So I'm here to support this project, being a resident of Eastville plus having experience in seven eleven for the last twelve years, running a successful seven eleven over here in, on Hamner. So along with this one, as I brought the letter of support, what Mayor is reading right now, I have this one where I have like more than two hundred residents who came up and signed on this one. And they were all in favor of it. They could not make it over here, but they were like very supportive for this project. The reason for the support is, one thing is that right now we have only one gas station on Archibald and Schleisman. So that is very packed all the time. So we as residents, like, I mean, if you look at Ontario Ranch and all that, more and more houses are coming up in the near future and more traffic will be generating. So people will be going and getting their gas from Ontario or city of Chino, wherever all tax dollars will be going to those cities. So we as a city, we want our residents to spend in our city and our tax dollars stay here. So one thing is it's convenient for the city. And second thing is convenient for the residents. And second thing is good for the city as a tax benefit as well. And whereas in the last meeting, I mean, when it was a planning commission meeting, there were some residents who opposed the project at that time. Their concern was about the, that there will be some homeless people coming over just because of seven eleven or a gas station. My point of view is here that homeless situations does not come with seven eleven or any convenience store. They come according to the city. I mean, if the city is not well managed, well maintained, there will be homeless problems. There will be other later problems and all that. So it's not seven eleven or any convenience store or a gas station that will attract homeless people. So, so that is already clear. And then second thing about any brand, it could be seven eleven or any other brand. But for seven eleven, as I can tell personally, that we are very much involved in the community. We try to give back to the community and stay supportive about all these things. And that's all I want to say. Once again, I'm very much in support of this project as a resident and as a seven eleven owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you mind if I use that as well, if I go through that? Mr. Donahue, can we have our next public comment, please?
Next speaker is John Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor Rigby and council members. I jotted down a few notes, so please bear with me while I read. My name is John Lopez and I've been a resident of Eastville for seventeen years. I've had a chance to see where the new seven eleven will be located. And I think it will be good in a good location to serve those that live and work close by. As our city grows, so do the needs of the community. And having a gas station near the Limonite and Archibald intersection, I believe, will benefit area residents and people that work close by relieving some traffic issues in other parts of the city. I've also had an opportunity to see the renderings as we've all seen up here on the, on the monitors. And I'm sure it's going to be a very nice establishment. In addition, obviously, the, the tax revenue that will come in from seven eleven sales will be, will be welcomed. And, you know, considering new business, prospective business for Eastville, obviously, I think it would behoove us to take a look at the owner. Mr. Saghar is, is very visible in the community. He's an asset to the community because he cares about Eastville and shows it through his gracious charitable contributions, particularly in our local academic institutions, which I'm sure you're aware of, 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 of these gracious actions that he's taken. He takes pride in Eastville and I'm sure that he'll keep seven eleven looking aesthetically pleasing, reflective of what we as citizens would expect here in Eastville. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, our next public comment, please.
Next speaker is from Frank Wei.
Good evening, Mayor and all the council members and city staff. My name is Frank Wei. I'm the resident for, in Eastville for three years. I think I'm probably the, one of the residents here that use Archibald Avenue most often every day. I live next to the Archibald and the River Road. That's where my house is located. My kids go to Narra, around the Raken Elementary School. However, my youngest son, I have to send him to the daycare, which is, is in Archibald Ranch, it's Archibald Ranch Church Preschool. So if you know where it's at, it's Archibald and Chino Avenue. So I have to take on that road every day in the morning and at night. So for that location, I think is very vital for our city. The reason why is if you look at that gas station between that avenue, between the Chino Avenue all the way to sixty, to all the way to River Road, that's probably the, we have two gas stations. One is on the seven eleven, just John just mentioned. But that one does not have car wash. The only car wash we have during that road is actually just the Shell gas station recently opened. If I have to cross a bridge all the way to Norco. So I saw there's a plane, it actually has a car wash. I think it's going to be very beneficial for all the residents here, especially if you look at the rest of the areas, you have the, all those storage places. I think you've got one more business coming in. So to have a car wash and a gas station in the middle of that section, I think it's going to be good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Yadira Jaggi.
Do we have, can you spell the name, baby?
Y A D I R A, last name J A G G I.
This is her husband, he'd like to speak in her place.
Okay, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lakshmi Jaggi. I'm a resident of Eastville for last twelve years. I'm in favor of the project with seven eleven and what they're looking to do over here in Eastville. You know, as a city, we're growing really fast. I mean, I see a lot of, you know, new homes coming in our cities nearby and the population is growing. And I feel like, you know, having multiple gas stations would be very beneficial for the community as well. I currently actually myself go to the seven eleven over at Hamner, you know, with my family. I feel like seven elevens, they are, they're safe, you know? I feel like if they are managed correctly, I don't see anywhere where there are homeless or anything would be an issue in the city. So I'm in a favor of it and I feel like it brings, it'll bring a lot of, you know, jobs and other things to our city as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Gita Sud.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and everybody here. My name is Gita and I am resident of Eastville for eleven years. And I also serve on the PTA for Rosa Parks Elementary School. And I am here in favor of definitely the seven eleven here in Eastville. As everybody knows, we have three freeways connecting and so many of us go to LA every day. And sixty is the one freeway we take for that. There is really no gas station. The one that I always stop is at the Mobil in Ontario. It would be really convenient to see, to have a, a gas station over there. Also, everybody has almost said the same thing that I want to. But one thing I would always say that I do have kids, I've taken the kids in there. I have not really ever felt unsafe over there. I haven't seen any homeless or panhandlers. They're usually panhandlers around the freeways all the time, but I have totally felt safe. Even on the seven eleven slurpy day, there's always a light outside. If we would think that place was not safe, we would definitely not take our kids somewhere where we would think they were not safe. That's pretty much it from my side. I would really hope that this project comes into action and that's it. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Grant Ross.
Thank you, council, for, for giving us the opportunity to speak. My partner and I are, are the, were the original developers of the campus project or also the owners of, of the subject site. Eastville has, it's never easy getting up here and speaking. No matter how many times I do it, but this, this city has, is, holds a special place in our hearts. You know, we've, we've planted our flag here. We're not a huge company. We've taken a huge position over here because of the special place that it is. We appreciate the opportunity to do business here. As it relates to the campus project, you won't have it here, but during the planning commission presentation, we had letters of support from all the businesses that occupy in there. We had a letter of support from the association manager who oversees that association. When we had planning commission, which was approved four to one, there was discussion related to, you know, the, the maintenance of, of that easement area. We're kind of limited in what we can do because although we have title to it, you know, Edison basically oversees that whole entire area. That night, the people that were complaining, I gave them my cellphone. I said, I'm available twenty-four seven. If you have issues regarding any portion of our projects at any time, I want you to call us, call me specifically or text me. We clean up the area the next day. I haven't heard from anyone since then. I want to just quickly go through a couple of points. You know, we're doing the merge project. We understand, and it's hard appeasing everybody in the city. We understand that there's a huge push to elevate the retail throughout the city. Although, you know, proud owner of this property, it isn't, it isn't the, you know, the prettiest person at the ball here in terms of, you know, real estate fundamentals as much as we love it. And we joke around with seven eleven because I said it at planning commission, she goes, oh, my God, why would you say anything negative about our site? It's not negative about the site, but we're driving traffic relative to the higher in uses at the merge project. We're not fully leased. We're being very selective in terms of the tenement set that we're putting in there. We've got the home set project that we're underway on, you know, which is going to provide about fifteen million dollars with the infrastructure at our own dime, putting in, in the Limonite connection. There is somewhat a combination in terms of, you know, what we're able to achieve and what we're able to deliver. Couple of other things, we spent a year going through this design process regarding seven eleven. This is the most expensive seven eleven that they're building in the country. So this didn't come at some sort of whim of a thought. This is a year long process. We feel like we got a lot of support. What I would offer is that we would put some sort of landscape buffer on the south side to kind of soften it up, to help appease those that may have some concerns. I'm running out of time here, but I would appreciate your support in the overall development.
Thank you.
Just wanted to, you asked a question earlier about gas stations. There is a gas station at the Walmart site on the far east side, side of the property. So it's, it looks like as far away from the Limonite-Archibald intersection in this project as possible on the Walmart site. So it's not on the Archibald corridor, it's on, actually on the Limonite corridor.
You know, better or worse, we've, we've actually approached Walmart. We had on both of our projects, opportunities where we share infrastructure. They were not willing to split any of the costs, which was shocking from a Walmart perspective, I thought, good neighbor. But relative to that, they have no timeframe in terms of building, developing that, whether or not it may ultimately get developed. We've actually approached them about buying it. And then one other comment that I wanted to make was relative to this site, alternative from a seven eleven, property's owned industrial. We've gone out, we've got attracted auto related uses. Alternatively, we'd look to do an industrial building. It's not our preference, you know, based on, you know, some of the things that people brought up. So that's, I just want to bring that up. Chevron has a smaller format in terms of what got approved at the merge.
Thank you. So just as a, for the information, or for the public's information, we were given a letter of support. There's approximately two hundred and twenty lines. Some of the lines are blank, some of the lines are filled out. Just my two cents on this, some of them are nine one seven five two zip code, some of them are nine two eight eight zero. As a reminder, nine one seven five two is on the east side of Hamner. We're talking about the west side of the city for this, so just for information purposes. We will go ahead and close the public hearing and we will
We We haven't finished comment yet.
Oh, there's still more. I'm sorry, just kidding. We're, the public comment is still open. I thought that he was the last one, I apologize. Public hearing is still open.
We, we do have one comment card left from the applicant, but at this time, we also would like to give the appellant a chance to speak if they are in attendance. Doesn't appear that they are. The one who filed the appeal.
So the person that filed the appeal is not here and the applicant has
Already spoke.
Well, the owner has.
They, they've designated one person to speak on behalf of them. And it's a short presentation. Chris Gabriel, if you'd like to come up?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mark. Council members, city staff, thanks for having us. My name is Chris Gabriel and I am a consultant with seven eleven. And because folks have mentioned a lot, that will be in the quick, short. Presentation today, I will be expeditious about how I present this. Okay, so real quickly, in terms of the presentation, just the brief objectives, you know, pretty much sums up. We just wanted to tell you kind of where we've been and where we are today, summing up in how we've changed for the better. But also, number two, how we've kind of listened to Eastville residents responded and truly tried and are consistently trying to become a reflection of the communities in which we reside. So most folks might know, we did start as a Southland ice company. So we were just a nice company back in the day, good old nineteen twenty-seven. And the idea of the convenience store came from a sales associate that said, hey, do you mind if we sell some eggs and milk? And that's how seven eleven got started. They said, what time do you want to open? And that's how Seven Eleven got started. They said, what time do you want to open? What time you want to close? Seven AM to eleven PM. That's kind of how we got our name. Started nineteen forty-six, and then nineteen sixty-three is when uh, the first convenience store opened twenty-four hours. And in nineteen sixty-six, you might like the doors, but I think the slurpee probably made a greater impact on uh, American culture. But that could be argued. So. Eight thousand stores plus in the United States, over ten thousand stores in North America. And now it's over sixty-five thousand stores that we have worldwide. So, also just want to, just show a quick aerial view of, you know, Seven Eleven. What it wants to do, but also Archibald and Limonite, how we kind of see and why we want to put ourselves there. So Seven Eleven today, it's a Fortune five hundred company, industry-leading credit rating, industry-leading cap rate. These are great things for development, great things for businesses. Really, when you have a capitalization rate that uh, Seven Eleven brings to the table. It is a great marriage of development and of local ownership. We might be a big corporation, but we also have everyday local franchisees. And that partnership is key, and what makes us a different company, and also what makes us more responsive to the local community needs. Now, if you see the uh, Archibald and Limonite proposed site, so if you look up and you're looking at the second, if we go up midway, you see that second star. Right on there. That star is where the proposed Seven Eleven would like to go. The other star just northeast of that is the Chevron, the proposed Chevron. Go a little bit down Archibald, and you will see the Seven Eleven on the southeast corner of the street. It is important to note, you might say, well, there's a Seven Eleven, you know, a mile away from there. The interesting thing to note is that gas station is currently operating over capacity. Meaning a certain gas station, based off of the pumps, based off its size, is predicted to do a certain amount of gallons per year. The store is not only killing it, it's crushing it, but to the point where it's over encumbered. And a lot of the release point will be this store. It's going to be on the opposite side of the street. You have a median up most of the way. And with traffic flow back and forth, uh, this not only makes sense, but also fits. Uh, the upcoming future development and also the traffic patterns. And it will alleviate ingress egress problems that you have over at the Archibald site, and could continue to have as we develop the community. Um, out. So. You know, I, I, I like Eastville for the fact that it's very specific about what it wants. I've been to several council meetings or meetings where they talk about wanting to, what is it? Elevate, right? Eastville wants to elevate. So what does it mean to elevate? You gotta get involved. You gotta get your hands in the mud and the muck. You gotta be responsive to the community. So one of the things that, that we really try to do is get involved. Get involved with the community. We started over a year ago, if you guys remember, we brought up that site over on Hamner and Schleishman. Great outreach to the church, great outreach to the community, but it didn't, it didn't turn out. It's just not where folks wanted to go. And that was okay, because we were looking at being responsive to the community. Got us to the Fall Festival. We started to say, well, what do you want? How do we become an integral part of the community that can make a positive impact every day? So it's not looked at like the old Seven Elevens. You guys remember the Seven Elevens from back in the eighties and the nineties, where you played Duck Hunt on the video game, and they were just cigarette and beer machines, right? That Seven Eleven that you, you might have found back in the eighties and the nineties, and some people still to this day have that conception. When they look at a Seven Eleven. That isn't true anymore. That isn't. And we've taken the time. To really make Seven Eleven something special. And it starts with the franchisees, and it starts with their commitment to the community. So we start with the Fall Festival. We start getting involved in the chamber. We have an amazing franchisee, two amazing franchisees. That have been excellent, uh, in not only their philanthropy work, but connecting with the community to make a difference. So we also went out and surveyed some of our customers and asked them, well, what would you like, what would you like to see? So one of the big things was no diesel on the west side, and that was pretty good to our ears. Eastville, folks love their toys, like any great inland empire person should love their toys. Their off, off-terrain vehicles, their boats and whatnot. So having diesel there was an important piece to our puzzle. In making a difference in the community and providing something that nobody else had. Also, there wasn't a car wash on the west side. Whether you like them or not, folks got to wash their cars. This was a very convenient location. Also, higher quality in-store experience. So yes, Seven Eleven had turned up the notch and had been doing better. But they wanted something more. So, as Grant had alluded, this has been one of the most expensive Seven Elevens that we're putting together, and that continues. So what are some of the things that you're going to see in this Seven Eleven that you're not going to see in other Seven Elevens? How are you guys, Eastvale, going to be proud of this new Seven Eleven? Why is it unique? Well, you're going to get bean-to-cup coffee, that stuff where you hit the button, grounds the beans. You have that perfect cup of coffee every time, so it's not stale. You're going to have an espresso service station. You're going to have nitro cold brew coffee. It's so unique, I don't even know what it is, but saying nitro brew seems like it could be very interesting. Also have a craft beer cave and a high-end wine selection, fresh baked in-store baked goods. Expanded selection, specifically in this store on fresh food options. And it's important to note that the fresh food is delivered daily from Tustin, so it's local. Where you have Trader Joe's, if you go and buy a sandwich over there, the expiration date, right, is about five to seven days, that code. For us, it's three days. So, and it's made in Tustin. So we're really pushing uh, to work. On uh, local sourcing and fresh food. Also, the landlord has been willing to, which is great, uh, put a landscape buffer to address any of the. Community concerns about the easement that we were talking about, something, you know, that makes sense and that looks pretty. And that also doesn't hinder any of the conditions that we've been asked to go. And lastly, uh, Seven Now, if anybody's heard of this, this site will have Seven Now, which is a. I, I don't know if you remember the pink dot from Los Angeles. You call up and you order your convenience store, your beer, your food, your chips. And they come and deliver it to you. Well, Seven Now, you can order Seven Eleven on your phone, and we will deliver it to you. Seven Now will be at this new site. So all, anything that you would need, we would be able to deliver it. And we will be uh, showing it off at this new site. One of the things that Seven Eleven has done, um, and I will uh, speed through it, but I talked about. Becoming a fresh food destination. Fifteen years ago, we were the bigger beer and cigarette store. Beer and cigarettes were about sixty percent of our total sales, and fresh food was about two percent. Now, fresh food is over twenty percent of the store sales. That's a huge difference. And for us, it's a big margin item. So because it's that big margin item, you have huge backing from the corporation and huge commitment from the local franchisees. To go all in on fresh food. So you're going to see vegan options. You're going to see non-GMO food. You're going to see nuts. You're going to see, uh, you're going to see your, uh, your drinks, your juices like you have over here. Things that you normally wouldn't see from a Seven Eleven, private label and private brands, that we're taking it to the next level. And some of you on the, on the dais, I can tell, actually work out sometimes. So, something like this would fit. Uh, some, some take off their shirts at, at country music festivals. Nobody knows who this could be. Uh, but I heard that it happened. But. Busting shops. Yes, indeed. But eating those healthy nuts and vegan options, that, that keeps you with that shirt off. Yes, blame him. Yes, indeed. And so, uh, one of the things that we do do is uh, Seven Eleven University. And I, I know you're saying, was it like ITT Tech? No. It is basically what we do is, we want. To continue the development of any staff that comes in. So constantly what we're trying to do, and this really has been ramped up recently. Is teaching these individuals, teaching staff members how to be better customer service associates. So going through stuff with compliance, trainings on age-restricted items. That, that helps with the cigarettes and the beer. We are, we have a POS system that if you want to buy beer, you have to swipe your license. And just to make sure, oh, you're twenty-one, we got to swipe it, then we're allowed to sell you. If we don't swipe that, can't sell you that beer. Anti-bullying, work safety, food handling, preventing fraud, addressing shoplifters and uh, robbers, and so on. And uh, in terms of our asset protection management and our crime deterrence program. Uh, Seven Eleven's crime deterrence program trains employees for primary components. One, visibility in and out of the store, that's always important, the way that we connect with the local authorities. Maintaining a bright interior and exterior lighting. And three, this is kind of interesting that most folks might not know. Um, is the cash control. So what we do in the drawers, no more than fifty dollars that they can have on hand during the day. And no more than thirty dollars at night. Why is that? Because we want to prevent against people coming in and holding up the stores. So that money is immediately dropped into a large uh, safe right underneath where the registers are. All large bills dropped, so they can't come in and rob it. We can't open that. There's a time lock, takes ten minutes to open it. So, reducing robberies, we found this is very good in Los Angeles and have been uh, pulling it out all over. So, um, lastly, in terms of our. Community partnerships, we've talked a little bit about the things that our franchisees have done. Seven Eleven nationally has ra- raised over three million dollars for the Multiple Distrofee Association. And we're constantly working with uh, local schools, local nonprofit organizations, local parks. Uh, to figure out ways that we can get our local franchisees involved. Making a difference, not only philanthropically with their money, but also with their time and their other resources. And we are avid supporters of the police and fire departments, and big supporters of folks like the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. So we have a mission statement, and we, we have this thing called Project A Game. The corporation gives a thousand dollars, the franchisee gives a thousand dollars. We do that to schools, to parks, to nonprofits. And the mission statement for Project A Game is help kids develop a strong foundation for success through education, fitness, safety. And hunger relief. So that is something, when we're looking at franchisees in the future, as we progress. And we want to become that super fantastic store that meets all those needs. The litmus test for the right franchisee is getting more difficult and difficult to achieve. That bar is getting higher. So the franchisee that you're going to get, maybe in this room, maybe not, but you're going to get a franchisee that's willing to commit. To the principles of Eastvale, and commit to escalating you guys to that next level. And lastly, you know, we have this thing called Retailer Initiative, where it's not, it's the corporation and the franchisee. Working harmoniously with the local community and the local city to make it better. And we talk about encouraging each store to assess the needs of the surrounding community. And adjust the products that they have in the store, as well as the way that they're serving their community. And that they, the products that they offer, based upon the needs that the community has. So, not only do I think we're doing that, but I think that our commitment to that is greater than it's ever been. So, thank you very much. We have a team of folks here. If you have any particular questions, we'll just call up the person with the expertise to answer anything that you may have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing, do we have any further public comments?
No, Mayor.
No, then we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And I would like to turn to council for discussion. We'll start uh, on our opposite end. Councilmember Lorimer.
All right, thank you. Um, appreciate the, the comments from everybody today and uh, presentations. I, I. I appreciate Seven Eleven and the community. I think they are a good partner. Um, one of the things, though, I have experienced Seven Eleven over in Asia, specifically Taiwan. And I'm waiting for that experience to come here, because it is amazing. Not saying what we have is not great, but. Uh, it, it's, it's a different level, so I'm looking forward to that day. But um, I don't have any uh, additional questions at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Plot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have a few comments. Um. I'm not necessarily a fan of the idea of Seven Eleven coming into that particular area, since the idea in, in retrospect, that there's three convenience stores and gas stations. In theory, it'll be out there, and Grant, you are right, like, we don't have really a, a set plan of when Costco or that gas station would come in. Sorry, what did I say? Oh, sorry, Walmart, I apologize. And the idea of um, uh, you know, just to, just to have that. And the idea of just creating this Chevron, Seven Eleven, Arco competition in every single intersection point of a twelve and a half square mile radius city. Concerns me a little bit. However, I don't know if it addresses the needs of the specific things that we really need in the city. And I realize the campus is, may not be where the needs are, need to be met. So my question is this, and I don't want me to push you on the spot, Grant. But I do want to address what the needs are, and maybe not through the campus, but the merge project, because that's not, still uncertain what all would go on there, and we appreciate the sprouts coming in. Which the community is, loves you for that. The one areas that we could use, and this is just going off of, uh, of, you know, maybe leveraging that project. Of the things that we actually really do need versus the campus project, which, again, I'm okay with it, but there is not a single. Person here in opposition, neither is the applicant. I have great concern for that as to the reality of the opposition. I have my own concerns about the project that I've already discussed, as far as the actual, what are the really true needs of this convenience store? When there's so many others that are going to be in the vicinity, again, in theory. But here's what we need, and this is what I, and again, if you, you don't have to answer that right away, but we need small office space. We don't have it. The merge could be that opportunity, not necessarily the campus, but the merge could be the opportunity there. And would you accommodate something for that? The second thing is, if the city were to bring a brewery, it's a, it's a huge need, it's one that's constantly being brought up. That's something, uh, uh, if it's within the ALUG zone, there's, I know some ALUG zone issues with, with the merge. But could we accommodate something like that? Even if the city were to bring a potential brewery to, would you be able to accommodate that and make that happen? And I guess in my, and, and what I'm looking at is leveraging the opportunity here at campus to get what you guys want. But we need what we want at the merge project. And those are two things that come up very specifically, small office space. And a brewery, for that matter. And you don't, you, it's, I don't, I apologize to put you on the spot. But I, but I would love to, and, and, and again, I know we're talking about conditions, but I think the layout of Seven Eleven is awesome. I think it looks phenomenal. I, I think it's an amazing, there's nothing wrong about it. I think it looks awesome. Right, but again, I don't know if it addresses the needs. And I think maybe the campus is in the right spot, but then let's look at the merge project, since you, since you own and develop that project as well. And see, maybe we can address those needs that we really need over there, and kind of think out of the box. And, you know, in order to prove this, let's look at those things. Because I know our council members up here, I'm not going to speak for them, but I know they know those particular needs as well. So I'll kind of give you the moment on that one.
I, I think rather than, than discussing that, let's wait on that, since that is a different project. Um, that i- isn't on our agenda tonight, if I'm correct.
Correct. The, the development of the merge is not on the agenda tonight, so we can't really get into any great detail as to what would go on that particular site. Um, and certainly we couldn't condition the Seven Eleven on potential future development of the merge.
Just as a general, general vicinity needs of the city, I think is what Mayor Protem Plot is referring to. So if we just, if we just know, note that.
Part of my, part of the way I'm voting is to leverage other pieces, and I don't, I understand we're talking about one particular project. That maybe none of these things can happen, but for my decision-making in this process, I want to know kind of what the status is on that. And, and addressing those particular needs. And I don't know if that's appropriate, um, but it, I'm, I'm standing up for that argument. Because it is part of my idea to leverage that.
Well, as a member of the public, we can't really control what they say, so if you would like to open public comment again, you could allow it. But from the council perspective, we can't really get into deliberation back and forth onto potential future development at the merge project site.
What do you recommend?
Recommend you not do it.
Then we are not going to open up the public hearing again. Sorry. We'll move to councilmembers, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ditto on everything council, or Mayor Protem Plot said, uh, some good ideas. And obviously giving you guys some insight in what we'd like to see. I have a question regarding conditions. Did uh, the planning commission ask for? Um, a security camera?
It's our.
It's already a part of the conditions.
No, I, I know, I, I know they have nice elaborate security sys- uh, camera systems. I'm talking about a uh, uh, mobile one. That's the same or similar to what we already have throughout the city, that the sheriff's department can put where they think they need to have it. Around that site.
The planning commission did not, to my knowledge, condition a, a mobile one, no.
Okay. Well, that was going to be my thing. If this does get approved, that's. Okay. Well, that was gonna be my thing. If this does get approved, that's what I would request, is that that is made one, uh, to, as a, uh, condition of approval, if that's okay with the, uh, applicant. We have some, uh...
So, so are you asking for the applicant to purchase like a CCTV, uh, camera that the city can use?
Just like we have already.
Somewhere in the public right of way near this, near this site?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we did that with a recent approval. I forget which one it was. Was that your, I think that was your, the Merge project.
Merge project.
I think it was. So you're talking about something, a similar condition on this project?
Correct.
There, there's a, a comment.
Well, I think it's a request, right?
It is a request, yes. That's what I would like as a condition of approval should this.
You, you would need to open up public comment and let the applicant come up and speak whether they'd be willing to do that or not.
Mr. Mayor.
I am, Peter Gonzalez.
Just a second, please. Let's go ahead and if we can, if we can just wait one minute on that, if we can just go through one time, see if there's any other comments that may require the applicant, then we can open up the public hearing and get all those taken care of at once, if that's okay? Councilmember Rial.
I have a question for Erica. Um, so regarding Councilmember Tassari's request, if we were to move forward with that request, does that mean that we have to approve the denial and then go through the whole process again?
Well, technically tonight you won't be taking final action on anything because you don't have any resolutions in your packet. So the motion would be to direct staff to come back with a resolution based off of the position that you ultimately, a majority of you support, whether that's to, uh, approve the project as approved by Planning Commission, approve it with modifications, or deny it.
Got it. Thank you. That's very helpful. Um, I, as a lot of you know, I live on Archibald Avenue, so that's having, having, you know, a gas station, a car wash, a convenience store right there would be super helpful. Um, there's only one on Archibald really in the city of Eastville. So I, and I drive through, drive towards sixty all the time, and I, that's something that I definitely see the need of it, and I, I know I'm not the only one. Um, I'm not too concerned about having two, the, gas stations there. I, I like competition. Like, hopefully that will lower the price. Who doesn't love lower gas price? Um, so that's, I'm not against that. My only concern, I would say, is, um, it's the alcohol part of it. Um, being able to sell alcohol from six AM to two AM, that's a, that's a pretty extensive hours. Um, I would love to see it maybe like ending at midnight, or maybe one, but I, two AM, it's, this is a family community, and Archibald, it's wide. Like, if you look at the road, it's perfect for all kinds of illegal activities. Not that you should do it, but, um, I, that's my only concern. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I have a few comments, um, that I'd just like to share. So my first is, is this property, this parcel was originally, we were planning originally to have some sort of office building on it and, which filled some of the needs within Eastville. We changed it to elevate Eastville, to bring retail, something that the residents want, and then now we're going with a gas station. Um, so I'm not sure that, that we're going in the right direction with this or the direction that we originally anticipated, um, when we, when we changed from what it was originally projected to be the office building. Um, so that's, that's one of my concerns that I have. If we do go forward with this, is this going to be, in, in staff maybe able to help, is this going to be an all-done-at-once project, meaning the gas station, convenience store, and the car wash? I just don't want us to get into situations that we ran into in other developments that they've done little things, or for instance, across the street that we approved and conditioned Walmart to be built a certain way, and years later, they're still not being built. Uh, similar to Costco, we approved them, they have a car wash coming, but they, we didn't put a time constraint on it, so.
So, so you, you could condition them with a certain timeframe to break ground on this project, uh, it, as part of a condition, a, a conditional use permit. So you could say it needs to break ground within the next nine months a- and be open within the next year and a half or something like that with, as part of this conditional use permit, and, and you could ask the applicant if they'd be willing to do that. But, but I, I can guarantee you they want to break ground as quickly as possible.
And you can also ask that it not be phased, that it be done in one, one phase.
I think if we do move forward with this, I think that's something that I would strongly recommend to my colleagues that we do, that we, we condition it to start within a certain date, complete within a certain date, and to not be phased. Um, I think that just gets us into situations we don't necessarily want to be in, um, such as we're running into across adjacent from this property. Regarding the easement, um, i- is there anything that we can do? I know this easement runs past this parcel, but is there anything that we can do to work on that easement with the, with the landowner there? Because I know that's a big, um, area of concern or even the, the Seven-Eleven, because that is a big area of concern of those residents below, um, just south of there. Is that easement and no real visual buffer? I mean, yes, there's a land, um, space buffer, but there's no real visual buffer. So I don't know if there's something that we can improve, uh, having more, more shrubbery trees there, because visually that's the big thing for those residents there, and I think visually, um, it, it will impact them as other areas along there kind of do. So I don't know if that's something that, between the, the developer and Seven-Eleven, that they'd be willing to add a- anything additional there to help ease that. And then, there is no wall, I believe, along this south as Councilmember Tassari was saying, right? So it's just open.
That is correct.
And what about to the west there?
Not on the project site. There's no wall.
And where does that lead to? That storage area? The storage facility?
So yes, the, there's a, the red line there indicates the, the property area for the Seven-Eleven gas station, car wash. To the west of that, shown on this diagram, there's a vacant piece. That is the mini storage. And then next to that, uh, right with that landscaping is, there's a small wall that, that encloses the, uh, parking, uh, the loading area for that one building right there. So there's nothing on the south, di- you know, differentiating the property that's in question tonight, the Seven-Eleven, from the rest. There's no wall or landscaping there. There's just, there's parking there. So we could, I think, I believe it's already been added that they asked that, they want to add additional landscaping, so you could have a wall there as well if you wish.
And what about on the, the west side there? So there's gonna be nothing? Is that driveway there or drive area gonna just join? Yeah, that's a good picture of it. So on the left side there, is that just gonna join the driving area of the self-storage, or how is that?
Yes.
So they're gonna pull right up to, there's no wall around the self-storage area, or?
There's an area that's, uh, there's the four, the, the height building, and then there's a lower, um, like one-story section, and that's enclosed. But then there's an open area before that, so I'm sorry, I don't have that site plan available, but, um, it's not a, like a continuous wall all the way across.
So if I was, if I had something stored in the self-storage area, I could theoretically pull in that south driveway and just go straight across right there and access my storage unit without going inside a fence or anything, or outside a fence?
So there is, the storage unit is like a standalone multi-story building, and then there's one portion that's adjacent to it that is a, a line of, of one-story units.
So, so, so Gina, if you pull up the aerial, you, you can see that there's a drive aisle all along all of those buildings th- through, through the, so you can see right there, all those buildings have a drive aisle, and that drive aisle would be extended up to the Seven-Eleven. And that's how the site has all been connected and mastered and laid out.
You have to enter the self-storage, the office area through the Seven-Eleven. It's not like any units going through it in the back.
Okay.
But you would have to access, that's a drive aisle that's connecting all the different buildings, and then there's an access into the self-storage from that area.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the council right now? Then we are going to go ahead and open back up the public hearing and pose the question is if Seven-Eleven or the developer would be willing to, um, purchase a monitoring camera, um, similar to what we've done at the, the Merge project. So it's a, basically a CCTV camera system that can be, you kind of interchange throughout the whole project area. It's not just one fixed camera. It could be put on the south side in three, four months. It could be moved to the north side or wherever it would need to be, so.
Okay, so I, I, I can't answer that question right now specifically. I do need to get more details on that. Um, is it, is it wireless? Does it tap into our system? It would be its own autonomous unit, and it would be able to be accessed remotely by the Sheriff's Department or our city engineers, you know, to, to, the Sheriff's Department in particular, so that they could, uh, let's say they're having some type of activity that, uh, they need to be aware of, and, uh, they need to gather intelligence. They can, they, they can access it wirelessly. There's a, wirelessly, there's a hard drive in it, and then they could download whatever, uh, video they needed. How about electrical? Is it plugged in hardwired, or is it self-powered?
They're usually attached to our streetlights. So, so we, we install them. You, you would, you would just need to buy the camera.
Okay. Is there a price? I don't have any info on this. This is the first I hear of it.
Yeah.
We, our, our standard security system is a, is a high-tech DVR in the store. There's two exterior cameras, one on the car wash, one on the, uh, gas canopy, and then two on the inside. One's like a three-sixty camera, and all of that's accessible to the PD when they come in. If there's any issues outside, we can, uh, rewind, download anything to a, a USB drive or even burn a DVD, I think, in stores. Uh, also, the DVR is, is remotely accessible by our, our asset protection company, so we can log into any store and, you know, uh, monitor what's going on on the site. Um, that's our, our current situation.
So you only have two exterior cameras?
Yeah. On our gas sites, uh, we have one facing the gas island and one on the car wash, just two, and then two on the inside.
So we have, we've gone through, that all of our new developments go through a security procedure, right?
Yes.
And that went through that, and that was sufficient? Two cameras?
I believe so. If that was our process, yes.
I may, I may be able to answer this one, just from experience, so, as I work in the security, fire alarm industry. Yeah, most, most Seven-Elevens or convenience stores like that, we do a lot of shelves, gas stations, we do all different types of convenience stores for cameras. And typically, two is pretty common, because of just, certainly you're not talking about a massive piece of square footage. You can usually with the ax, with, with cameras these days and different types of, I mean, what, what, what is the, what is the quality of the cameras you're using, using right now?
I don't have the specs on it, but you can zoom in pretty closely on them and, you know, angle them in any direction you want.
It's relatively inexpensive to get a really good quality camera that can cover two cameras, would be able to cover at least one area of, of a site and get good coverage and quality, not very pixelated. It's pretty common to, to get something like that. Just from, I, I don't know if you would need more cameras, at least for that front end. If you're talking about the front end.
Yeah.
For, for a size Seven-Eleven, I can just tell you, we, we, we usually just spec out, let's say we, I mean, the company I work for, we spec usually two convenience stores as well.
If there's areas of, of concern, we can definitely add additional cameras. I, I can't, I don't know much about this police department camera, um, but we can definitely add additional cameras, and we work with the PD in every city if there's any issues.
If we can gain the support for the project, us as the owners, I can't imagine it's more than a five-thousand-dollar camera.
They actually are.
To gain the support of.
I, I think they're somewhat pricey. I think they're around ten. How much, do you remember, Mayor?
I don't know the cost of a camera.
If it's under ten thousand dollars, we'll shoulder the burden if it gains the support and makes the community feel better.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lorimer. Th- thank you. I, I appreciate, I appreciate, um, the rea- the, the comments back from the applicant on, on the subject, and th- these comments are, uh, gonna be directed towards my colleagues, and I, I say this respectfully. We need to have certainty when applicants are coming forward to bring a business to our city. We cannot be legislating from the dais on changes at the last minute on things that they don't have any idea, on pricing. We can't be putting restrictions that put businesses at a disadvantage over existing businesses in town. This is not fair. Uh, I appreciate these ideas. I think they're great ideas, but we gotta do this beforehand. We can't do it from the dais, so. It, I, I, I find this process a little bit frustrating, and again, I say this respectfully, but we can't be doing this, guys.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it says in the, uh, um, agenda that with, that that's one of the options for approval. You know, we can approve, we can deny, or we can make modifications.
No, I, I, I agree with you on that point. It does say that, but this is not, I will, this is not professional. This is not how we should be treating people that are coming to invest in our city. Uh, again, my opinion, and I posit it respectfully. Thank you.
If it was open up to the public, do you guys do want to be, to update the Merge now that it's up? I can't do so.
Well, no, we are gonna update on the Merge. Um, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the council, or the, the comment, Councilmember Lorimer, um, as well as the information that's been requested, Councilmember Tassari. Um, I think in order for us to make a, a fully informed decision, we need to have as much information if we have, as we can have. Um, if it puts the developer or the business at an uncomfortable position, we apologize. Let us know. We can continue an item. We don't want to continue an item. We can continue an item. But I think, me personally, to make a decision, I need to have the most information that I can. I can't have, I can't make a decision if we don't have dollar amounts. We need to have dollar amounts. Then we need to continue an item rather than just making a decision, just being hopeful. So I, I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Lorimer. I appreciate your, your requesting the information. I think it's crucial to request the information, to have as much information as we can to make the best informed decision that we can.
Mayor, if I might just say, the, the applicant, or the developer, has said that they will pay for up to ten thousand dollars for a camera, and I think that should be more than sufficient to cover what the CCTV camera for, one camera for an intersection. A- and so, um, we can work with them, and I, I believe that number is something less than ten thousand dollars. Uh, um, I just don't have the exact amount. And had I, had anybody brought it up to me prior to that, I would have had that information available here. So, um, I, I would be happy to, um, um, get that information, but up to ten thousand dollars, I think could, i- if he agrees to that, then, then we can make that, um, uh, uh, if, if the council wishes, uh, um, we can work with them to identify purchasing that camera, and then we can install it.
Thank you.
Within the public right of way at an intersection, just like we do with all of our other ones.
Thank you. I know there was also a, while the public hearing is open, I know there was also a question, um, regarding the alcohol permit. I don't know if that's something that we want to bring up. The thing that I would remind our council on that is, is that we are, um, that is uniform with the other alcohol permits that we have, is what we're currently at. And I think that's why we put it onto this one also, just to keep it similar throughout the city.
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. So I don't know if...
It's fine. It's not, it's not a deal breaker for me. It's just something that I thought of. Yeah, it's not a deal breaker.
Thank you. One, the last question, uh, maybe for the applicant that I had, was just regarding breaking ground. I know every dollar, or every day's a dollar for you guys. You want to break ground last week. Um, but I just don't know between you and the developer if, if you would be in agreement to set a time to break ground, um, completion and to not do it as a phase. And to not do it as a phase, I think that's, I don't know if we come up with a day. Today or if we just make sure that it's not phased or I, I don't know. How is best to do that, but I just wanna make sure that if we do move forward with an approval today. That it's a project that's actually gonna move forward and not sit, if that makes sense, yes, please.
And, and, and part of the reason why you're saying that is, i- is Walmart. We did an approval about two years ago and ha- have not done anything on their site and they don't have any intent to do anything for a couple more years. A- and so it, it's, they were conditioned with badly needed infrastructure in our community. And, and the site is vacant and it's growing weeds and not being maintained to the appropriate Eastville standard.
Sure, thank you.
Understand, my, my, my name is Mike McFarland, uh, I'm a consultant also working with seven eleven, um. And the projects won't be phased, we're gonna build everything out all at once, as far as dictating a timeframe, I do wanna. We gotta make sure that it's an adequate timeframe as far as what's dictated because there's multiple. Agencies that have to review and, uh, some of you may or may not be aware. Some agencies can take up to eight months to get approvals for stuff. Um, in certain jurisdiction can take up to twelve months to get certain, certain approvals. So we are committed to this project, we're committed to going. Soon as this, as soon as we get approval, we're starting our CDs production wise and it's from a timeframe that we have. Typical timeframe is about six to seven months to get approval, CDs done, approvals through all the agencies is what we're aiming for. As soon as we get done with our, uh, CDs and we get our approvals. Any landlord deliverables that are out there, they're working on usually beforehand or right in line with that. And then we start construction, our construction timeframe ranges anywhere from five to seven months with the size of this project. With the, with the, uh, starting gate canopy on the car wash on there, it's probably closer to a seven month. Seven months as far as once we break ground all the way through. Store stocking, opening, turnover and getting everything in, so we're committed to moving as fast as possible. Uh, if you wanna say approved for a building permits right now, we're good to go, we'll break ground tomorrow.
So, 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 uh, uh, ma- mayor, what I, what I might suggest on this condition. I- is that we, we put a condition that they need to break ground within nine months. Uh, um, a- and I have all, um, a- and should they not be able to break ground within nine months, they need to come back before. Council in it, in, prior to that nine-month expiration and ask for an extension of that with due. Showing that they are making due diligence in that process, otherwise they avoid their CUP for the seven eleven approval. A- a- and so, I, I think if we put in a condition there where i- if they get to the eighth month mark and. There's some weird situation that is, one agency is slowing them down. Because we all know it's not gonna be the city of Eastville, uh, uh, um, it, but if it's one of our other agency partners that's slowing them down. And they can demonstrate that they were doing their due diligence to get those approval and those agencies were slower. Uh, um, then we can say, okay, we're gonna give you another two months or something like that. But not just an unlimited blanket, approve it all on the CUP, I have, I have the. Um, awareness and sitting down with the, uh, seven eleven corporate, uh, officials. That they, they want to move expeditiously on this and so they're gonna get the, uh, the projects in and so some, unless something dramatically different changes. They should be able to break ground within nine months and probably have the store open. If it takes five to six months after that, within eighteen months, so it gives them a cushion on a couple different things. But if we say nine months, uh, uh, for breaking ground and eighteen months for a store opening, um, that, that, uh, uh, and. They should be able to achieve that accomplishment.
I would agree that that's a reasonable timeframe.
Perfect. Better turn on my mic first, the last question was just regarding the landscaping, is, is there anything that we can do to help? Um, buffer and mitigate, cause I mean, e- especially with having a seven eleven. I feel you're gonna have a lot more traffic there than having a. Self-storage or having the industrial buildings or, or whatever it is, you're gonna get a lot more traffic going through there, there's gonna be a little bit more of a, of an. Of an annoyance to those neighbors on the south side, um, so I don't know if there's anything that we can do to mitigate that.
Mayor, what I might suggest i- is that we work to have a, uh, some kind of a landscape hedge. Uh, uh, or, or a tree buffer, a little bit more dense. Uh, than what is currently showed on the landscape plan and we work through the community development director to have that approved if the applicant so chooses to agree. And then that will provide the, 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 the smallest sliver of the property is on that south side. A- and so we can, we can work to provide some, some landscaping there to. Buffer the homes from, from vehicle lights, um, that, that is, um, that would shine in their backyards five hundred feet away.
That would be good, uh, if the, if the applicant would be willing to.
Yes, we can work with staff on that.
That's perfect, thank you. Then at this time, if there's no more comments or questions for the applicant, then we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And move forward, if there's any additional comments.
You, you have any questions on the, the camera system on the seven eleven, were you kinda, you were good on that?
No, I think if we're able to get, uh, I don't know, we call them a rovering camera or whatever. We have.
No, no, I'm, I'm on the seven eleven property itself, not, I mean, that, the, on the building. Not the, not the city, I just wanna make sure you had questions.
I was surprised with two cameras.
Yeah.
Um, I thought we would have had more cameras outside there.
Yeah.
But I think that rovering camera would help, cause we can move it to either of those entrances and that covers the majority of it. You have what, four cameras now or three cameras in there? Four cameras?
Four cameras.
Yeah. So I mean, you have all four directions basically covered with one of those systems, so. Any other comments, discussion between council? Then I'm looking for a motion.
I would move that we, uh, deny the, uh, appeal. And, uh, direct staff to, uh, bring back a, uh. Yeah, the resolution with the, uh, conditions that we discussed regarding the camera and the, uh, vegetation landscaping.
And the, and the condition about groundbreaking and, and opening.
And, and the condi- and.
Nine months and eighteen months.
The nine lim- nine months.
Second.
And the landscaping, correct?
Yeah, he said the landscaping on the south side.
And just for clarification, that is to move forward with the original approval. Of the planning commission, just for the public's clarification. We have a first, we have a second, Mr. Donahue, please.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Hi.
Councilmember Tsarri?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Ten Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, since that is our last item and this is just a special meeting, we do not have council business. But there are a couple of things that I would like to share and especially for those of you that are here, just, if you can stay just for two minutes, just to hear a couple of things. Um, one is, first and foremost, I wanted to give a huge shout out to our public safety. Uh, we had a very exciting day yesterday in Eastville and, uh, starting off with our law enforcement doing an excellent job. Uh, for those of you that know, there was an elementary school that was, uh, put on lockdown just out of a safety measure. Um, and our law enforcement did a great job as well as our city staff, our s- our school district and relayed that information out. May I say that they not only did a good job in relaying that information, but they apprehended two suspects, um, and it's an ongoing investigation. So great job to Lieutenant Martin. From there. From there, we had a, uh, uh, um, brush fire. That was just about right as that finished and so our cal fire went down and took care of that and did an excellent job in getting that. I came through the area, um, shortly after, we remained aware of it, I didn't even see any smoke or anything, so they did an excellent job in getting that out right away. I heard they had basically half of, uh, Southern California out there fighting that fire to make sure that it didn't get out of hand. With the homes that were right there, very close. Um, but while they were out there, we also had a structure fire in the city at a home. And they were able to take care of that with one of our, um, our, our medic squad was able to respond to that. Which we just approved and just got them on board, so our public safety was working hard yesterday, I just wanted to acknowledge and appreciate both of them for. All they do and their leadership that they do in our city and keeping us safe as well as keeping their, their, their members safe also, so thank you for that. Um, the last thing that I just wanted to share was, um, I think, looking at some of us, we have our, our. Pink bracelets on for a good friend of ours, Kathy Osovedo. Um, former council member in the city of Norco, uh, very influential in the area, really helped with, uh, getting Silver Lakes going. She is actually a, I don't know her exact title, but very involved at Silver Lakes. Um, the, she has just made the decision to, um, to stop further treatment. And she will be brought home on hospice, so, um, with heavy hearts, but we hope that everyone will keep her in her, in your prayers. And wish her and her family the best as they go through this tough time, so. Just wanted to share that, she's, like I said, she's been a great influence, not only in our city, not even being Norco. But she, uh, has just been a great influence in the whole region, so, um, we wish her family the best, so.
Mayor, if I might just add a few extra things on there, uh, our public safety did an outstanding job at Tailgate Fest, making sure we had a safe event. A, a fun event, uh, there for our community and showcase our community. It was last weekend, it was featured on a national country music television tw- top twenty countdown. Where Eastville was mentioned twenty times nationally, uh, n- not to mention on every billboard in Southern California. On, on every radio station and on a, a building rap in Santa Monica about highlighting Tailgate, so. Uh, we got some great, uh, coverage, uh, uh, and every one of the music artists that have huge social media presence. Mentioned Eastville a- a- as they are promoting their tours and so, um, we had a great, uh, event there.
And we were trending on Twitter, I think that's even a bigger. They don't see government officials like that, what do you say?
But it, it was one of the top one or two or three tre- trending, it, it was the number one trending topic in Southern California. That weekend, uh, was Tailgate Fest, so it was a, a great thing. Uh, earlier this week, uh, Mayor Rigby and the management team toured the Volkswagen Audi and Porsche training facility here in Eastville, which is an amazing facility. Um, they have some amazing cars in there and all the new top brands and, uh, 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 as well as some classics. But it's the largest of its kind, it's the only facility in the world that all three brands are working together on. And some days over two hundred people from around the country are being trained on about various things and they have a, a number of technician thing. Uh, training certification programs there. Our nine eleven memorial ceremony will be on September eleventh at six forty-five in the morning, so get a good night's sleep at Fire Station twenty-seven. Not at the station, but the next morning you'll be at the station. They're known as the night train, cause they work all night long. Um, and then the Quick Quack Car Wash will be having its ribbon cutting on September seventeenth at eleven thirty AM. We just found out that a few days ago that the soft, they soft opened and you can take your car and get it cleaned today, uh, at Quick Quack Car Wash. For, oh, I guess for free, um, don't quote me on that, um, quote her on that. And then save the date for the annual fall festival, which will be Saturday, October fifth from three to ten PM at Harada Heritage Park. We will be celebrating the ninth birthday of the city, I hear there will be cupcakes in celebration. And lastly, the city will be closed in observa- uh, observation of the holiday on Monday. And we will resume our normal business on Tuesday, September thirteenth at seven thirty AM. What'd you say? There's a holiday coming up on Monday, you have the. Oh, September third, I'm sorry, uh, uh, um, uh, sorry if I misspoke, a- and then we also have the. We, we have the, I'm just giving holidays off left and right here. Thank you for correcting me, city clerk, it's September third that we all have off. Uh, um, and then there is also the Eastville Chinese American Association Full Moon Festival, I believe it's happening on the fourteenth. Um, in, in the city of Eastville, which is always a great celebration, uh, in, in our community, so. A lot of great things happening in our community coming up, so mark your calendars and, um, if you have any questions, stay connected to us on social media, cause we post everything.
Great, thank you. The next meeting of the Eastville City Council will be on September eleventh, two thousand nineteen at six thirty PM and this meeting is now adjourned.